Okay, that's fine.
I did not press that.
But that's the, that's the way you wanted it set up, right?
Wait, who, Sarah, who are you talking to?
I'm talking to the world. I have no idea.
I think you just started the meeting a little early and we were, I was talking to Kathy.
I heard you. How could I have started it? I'm not an organizer. I'm a panelist.
You didn't hit start broadcast?
No, Kathy did.
Kathy, did you hit start broadcast? Okay. Is your audio working now? Okay. Kathy's just having audio issues, that's all.
Okay, and Mike has joined, but still, when you, when you notice who's in the outer chamber, if you could keep track of that, that would be helpful. Thank you. Because, because that's not visible to me.
Keep track of what?
The attendees.
Oh, yes, I am. So far, it's, yeah, I am. I don't, okay.
It's Barry and somebody.
Okay. A laptop? Okay.
Okay, so this is a question for you. This is different. We don't see people anymore. Is that right?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Kathy's just getting on. She's leaving her desktop because it's not working out. It's giving her audio issues. She has to go onto her laptop and then so she has audio. Right now, I'm on the phone with.
Okay. Hey, John, thanks for the cookies, by the way.
Were they good?
Yeah.
Are they all gone?
What's that?
Are they all gone?
Not quite, not yet.
Okay.
You mean if they are, we can get a refill?
Uh, I don't know. It depends. I got three or four more things to do yet, but it might have leftovers, yeah.
Next Christmas. I'll count them for Christmas. Yes.
Did you like the raspberry cookies?
Yes.
What's that?
Those were a surprise.
Do you like the raspberry cookies?
Raspberry.
They had fresh raspberries in them.
Yeah, a lot of them had preferred, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, they were like a chocolate chip cookie with milk chocolate and raspberries, fresh raspberries in it.
Yep. Very nice.
Okay. Hey, it's 6:57. You have three minutes.
Kathy's on twice, huh?
Oh, you can hear me now? All right.
Kathy was getting on from her home machine and her township machine, I think.
Right.
So Kathy, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, good.
Now, are you able to see anyone?
I can see Yvonne joined.
Okay.
You guys, you guys can see, but we can't?
The attendees.
Let me look, let me see my webcam here. I see Brian.
I see Brian.
I see John, Brian.
All right.
Okay, we're getting there.
Those are panelists.
Yes. Marissa, come, come back.
So are we, though, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to hit your camera icon, Mike.
Yeah.
What's that?
Hit your camera.
Ah, all right.
Automatically turned off. Have to turn them on.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize how it worked. Okay.
Okay. So I just asked that everyone have patience tonight, since this is kind of a new.
Method.
Yes. Okay. We only have two attendees so far. Michelle, can you see those?
Up three. David.
Okay.
Michelle, who were they?
Uh, Jane Helm and David Weber just came in.
Okay, and then you already had Barry, so that's the three.
And Yvonne.
Oh, okay.
Let's see. We don't have Bernie yet, right?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Now, this act, okay, so I'm assuming that the actual meeting started.
Yes.
Recorder.
No, yeah, sorry.
Once we hit start broadcasting, it was, it started recording.
Okay.
We're up to eight.
Kathy, Michelle, I don't see all the people on here. All I see is us.
Right. Well, you will not see the attendees.
Uh, I won't, okay.
No. They can see into this, they can see everybody, all, all the panelists, which is what you're called, as the panelists. They will be able to see and hear. We just, you can't see them or hear them until they're unmuted to ask their questions.
Okay. Okay, should we start the meeting then?
Shall we wait another minute for Bernie?
Oh, Bernie's not here yet, okay.
I keep waiting for him in the attendees.
Yeah, he should, he should come in as the panelist, hopefully.
Just in case, that's like Sarah did, came in as an attendee.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm just wait, you know, I'm watching for it.
Okay.
But he is not here yet.
Now, he'd be pretty good with the go-to meeting. He got, Bernie got on okay with that, so hopefully he'll be okay. Can, can y'all see the screen? I put the agenda up.
Yes.
Are you able to see that? Okay.
Well, I can't read it, but I can see it.
Yeah, I might need to make it bigger.
Yeah, I would get bigger screen. I'm using my iPad.
Shrunken on me. Let me see if I can make it bigger. I don't know if I can.
That's all right. I printed it, at least I printed.
Okay.
Well, I didn't, so.
Okay.
There's Bernie.
There's Bernie.
Yep.
Bernie, click your microphone.
I think he's muted again.
He is.
Uh, click to send their PIN. I'm sending him his PIN. Whatever that means.
I do have a question. How, I mean, can you guys see, how do you know if a audience member wants to speak?
They have a raise hand option that we can see, and they also have a spot where it says questions that they could actually type the question in if they want to.
Okay, well, you, so, I mean, can you see when people, can you see everybody on the screen?
We can see their names.
But how about their pictures if they have video on?
No, no, we can't see their faces or anything, just their names.
But I guess if they opt to, if you let them into talk, we might see them.
I think you'll just hear them.
Okay. Hey, Bernie.
Oh, he's.
Bernie, you have to hit your video camera. Oh, you have your video.
Your microphone.
Microphone. Hit the microphone on the right top.
No, it's not working.
It's self-muted, so.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're getting to be high-tech here, Bernie.
Okay.
Another decade or two.
I would like to call the meeting to order and announce that's a virtual meeting. And also announce that we had an executive session held on December 14th to discuss personnel. And the next thing up is to approve the minutes.
I could make a motion to approve the minutes of November 16th and December 7th.
I'll second. I can't get unmuted.
You're unmuted, Joe.
I am unmuted. You can hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right, good, thank you.
Uh, do we have any hands raised in the audience about the motion for approval of the minutes?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up is a police report.
Hello, yes, November 2020 monthly police report training we had, interview and interrogation for investigators and patrol officers. Point shooting introduction. Summary totals, number of calls for service, 131. Number of crimes investigated, nine. Number of arrests, zero. Number of traffic stops, nine. Number of accidents investigated, six.
That's it, thank you. Any questions?
I do not see any questions.
Okay, next we'll move on to the bills list. And do we have a motion for that?
I make a motion to accept the bills list.
Any amount of?
Uh, that is.
Yeah, I, I don't have it either, Bernie.
Oh, I didn't print it out, but Kathy did send a separate email.
Yes, she did.
Yeah.
Let's see, maybe I do have it. Maybe I do. Uh, no, I have the 297 figure.
I'm looking for it now. Bear with me a second.
The bills list?
Yeah, the total.
It is.
I have it here.
I have too many pages.
We are a work in progress, aren't we?
It's 305, 305,0223 dollars and 56 cents.
I guess, correct, as Michelle said.
And I seconded.
Okay, do we have any hands raised for questions?
Let me look real quick. I do not, oh, wait, yes, I do see one. Okay, hang on. Yvonne, you should be connected.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I was experimenting with finding things like raising my hand. I have no questions at this point.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Well, we know it works.
We're all learning.
Okay, the, no Brian out there?
I do not see Brian, no. And, no, I don't see any hands.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, we have the treasurer's report.
Okay, bear with me because I left my glasses downstairs. Uh, let's see, for the general fund for the month ending, we have an ending fund balance of $2,856,539 and 7 cents. I give a budget breakdown. Month end, November 30th, 2020, in open space, we have an ending fund balance of $2,109,966 and 83 cents with a budget breakdown. Um, capital project reserve, month ending November 30th, 2020, we have an ending fund balance of $678,024 and 91 cents. I give a budget breakdown. And Capital Road for the month ending November 30th, 2020, we have an ending fund balance of $4,742,481 and 15 cents. And I give a budget breakdown. And Liquid Fuels for the month ending November 30th, 2020, we have an ending fund balance of $186,382 and 46 cents. Pursuer, month ending November 30th, 2020, I have an ending fund balance of $33,106 and 74 cents. And in Escrow's, month ending November 30th, 2020, $236,529. And all of this is on our website to go see the budget. The budget breakdown, the budget to actual reports. They're all on the website.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Let me see if there are.
Questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, moving on, I guess John's up for the manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in addition to the items on the agenda, I worked extensively with staff to consult on updating the township's website. I've gone through a couple of drafts of the newsletter, and I want to report that, based on the board's direction, we ordered a contract to shank door in the amount of $14,823. That was $2,500 less than they originally proposed. This is for the doors at the building at Brink Coed. Uh, we got a second quote from Overhead Door Company in amount of $26,032. And Winfield, Winfield garage doors estimated verbally that cost would exceed $25,000. So we accepted the low bid of shank door with the two additional bids.
Excellent.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, next.
That wasn't me.
What's, what's your, John?
That wasn't me.
That was me, I'm sorry. All right, next we're going on to a public hearing, and I guess I'll turn that over to Joe. Is that correct, Joe?
Um, yes, that's for the financing documents?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, there's no one, there's no one here from, from Del Valle that's presenting this?
No, I'm doing.
All right, so I'll, I'll open the hearing, introduce into the, into the agenda, the ordinance, or into the hearing, Exhibit 1, the ordinance itself. I don't have the advertisements. Do you have the proof of advertisements?
Yes.
All right, that'll be Exhibit 2. With that, we'll open the hearing, and I'll hand it off to John to explain what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed ordinance which would refinance the existing debt of the township in the amount of approximately $4,220,000. Uh, the debt is callable on December 1st, 2021. Uh, the ordinance would authorize the issuance of debt effective tomorrow, or whenever the township accepts the rate as provided by Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority. Uh, it'll be a fixed cost rate. Um, the initial pro forma indicated the rate would be somewhere around 1.1, 1.07%. Uh, the rate fluctuates daily, however, when the rate is set, it will be permanent for the life of the loan. Uh, the loan outstanding at that time when it is refinanced would be approximately 10 years. The township would accrue interest savings over the life of the loan of about $220,000. When the loan, after following the board's adoption of the um, I will contact Delaware Valley tomorrow, and they will give me a quote. Um, and I, if it's within the range that we believe it'll be, I'll accept it and I'll forward the board, or forward the board the rate first and then get a consensus from the board to accept or reject the rate. Um, and then if the board accepts it, we'll post it on the township website, what the rate is and how much the savings would be.
Does the board have any questions?
None.
If you're not, no.
Does the audience have any questions? We're public comment.
I do not see any hands raised.
And so with that, we'll close the hearing, reconvene into the public meeting portion of the agenda. This ordinance is now in a position for your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I could make the motion to adopt ordinance 192, 2020, refinancing the existing township debt.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, any questions from the audience?
Uh, yes, hang on a minute. John has a question.
Okay.
Uh. Hang on. He's not connected to audio, so I'm not sure. He's had.
He has no audio.
Yeah, he has no audio, and I told him to check audio settings on his side because we don't have the ability to give him audio.
That's a. Can't he text it? He can put it to us in chat.
Yes. Uh, hang on one minute. Because I, I put his hand down, so now he's probably really. How do I send him a message?
Who was it, Michelle?
Brian, uh, I'm sorry, John Eldridge.
Oh, okay.
Hang on one minute, let me see here. Then chat message. Where's the chat?
Chat is at the bottom, below handout.
Type message, right. John. We are aware that you are, that you are having audio difficulties. I tried to unmute you, but it says you're not unmuted to audio. Okay, what do we do about that? That's on his end.
I'm gonna text you back or chat back the question.
Okay. You can chat back. Any questions to me? I will ask them for you.
Okay, so, any other questions out there?
I don't see anything other than, no, I don't see anything. No hands. Does everybody know how to raise their hand?
Sorry, Michelle, this is Brian. There is a function, there is a function for everybody if you're not aware of, on the settings under audio, if you click on the phone call, it gives you what phone number you can call in. If you open up the audio settings on your, there is a phone call number there, if that would help John to call in.
I will. I will type that down. Always call in.
See that, Michelle?
I don't, no.
Yeah, I saw it. It's there.
Yeah.
But it, it's also on the message that Kathy sent out with the link to the meeting. It's got the phone.
Yeah, he's not answering me, so.
Okay. Give it a minute. Everybody have a clock? It's 7:17. We'll wait till 7:19 or 7:18.
I said, I told him that in chat, because he can't hear anybody speaking, too.
He can't? Oh, well, then it's, well, you did, you did chat him, though, so.
Yes, yes. That was, that was the only concern I had, but sadly, that's not on our end.
Right. Um, I do, I do have a question. Why do we switch from Zoom to this?
A little bit more control.
And security.
Yeah, a lot more secure.
And I think once people get familiar with it, it'll become a lot easier. It's, it's just a new program.
Right.
Learning little, you know, the different things, options that you can use there.
We do have a Zoom safety net, don't we? I don't think, I'm not suggesting we use it, but.
We, if.
We could always use it again if we had to.
Yeah, I, yes, and, um, I mean, if, if y'all determine that, you know, you prefer Zoom, we always can go back to that, so.
Okay, we, minutes up, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Helms, construction of a home on the parcel lot 1B. I guess this is a discussion.
Yes, I've been asked to review all the paperwork that Jim's, Jim Helms was referencing in his request to build a house on this lot. And I agree with our zoning officer's determination that a house cannot be built on this lot. The, um, this situation was already litigated and already decided by the Commonwealth Court where they indicate that the constructs, that the conservation easement prevents the construction of a house on the lot. And Jim Helms' counter is that he wasn't the owner of the lot at the time the case was litigated, but the case runs with the land. It, it stays with the land. It has nothing to do with who owns the land. You can't just change ownership of land and say, okay, now that litigation doesn't apply. So I'm of the opinion that he cannot build a house on, on that property.
Okay, but he also mentioned something about a covenant that was done by the township. That has no effect on that?
Yeah, the only amendment to any covenant was to change meets and bounds. It had no significant, no change to the conservation easement whatsoever, and that still stands.
Okay.
And it was changed meets and bounds just on the trail portion, too, right?
Just the trail.
So it was a narrow.
So it doesn't affect his ability to build, okay.
No.
Um, is there any questions from the audience on this one?
Uh, Jim Helm.
Okay.
Let me unmute him. He is not connected to audio. Okay.
You can go into the questions section.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
Well, fortunately, Yvonne showed us that some of our attendees are connected to audio, so it's not a setting that we're handled.
It has something to do with their computers. They don't have their audio.
If you are.
I'm, I'm, I had difficulty with it, too. I couldn't find any audio buttons to connect. I just bumped into it by mistake.
Yeah, me too.
But you got it now.
Yeah, it's a confusing website.
Okay, I just I just typed everybody a message saying, you know, put it, put your questions in chat if you're having issues. Because I can't unmute him. And if he's not, that means he's not, he's not able to hear.
Yeah, he has no microphone there.
Right. Uh, what about Jane Helm?
Is she on?
He said, you were deciding the wrong thing.
Jane Helm is self, Jane Helm is self-muted, so.
So Jane can change hers?
She can change hers, yes.
There we go. Jane is unmuted.
Hi, this is Jim. I'm on Jane's computer now.
Okay, that works.
Okay, we got one out of two. It's a good thing. I think, you know, I didn't actually ask the township to relook at litigation. I appreciate the opinion. I assumed that the litigation ran with the, the ground. Just to restate here, you know, we have two things that were going on in 2005, and what got litigated was that the development plan, which allowed 20 houses in the development, would rule over the, uh, over the covenant. Now, I've learned this in arrears by reading the same thing that our solicitor wrote. It was felt that the owner at the time, who was also the builder at the time. And was felt that the owner at the time, who was also the builder at the time, could have, so that's what we have going on, but I'm not the owner, I'm not the builder. And, you know, that runs with the land, just know it's not in the property, it's not running with the land, it's on the property file, that is. So we buy the, the property, believing in the restrictive covenant. We believe that it holds both parties, the Helms and West Vinson, to the covenant. So we have this covenant that's sitting there, but it did get litigated, as, as Joe mentioned. What got litigated was when, you could put one, they decided that the development plan would be the ruling plan. I'm not asking relitigation, I'm asking the board to make an adjustment to the development plan and to stick to the restrictive covenant that they have. You've made many changes to development plans, I can point out a few, if for the audience, if you wish, but changing a development plan is within your purview. And allowing the twenty-first home as, as it is written in our restrictive covenant is what we are, uh, what we're requesting. I cited precedent of changing restrictive covenants and development plans. I mean, after all, the whole Weatherstone development ongoing right now was a change to the development plan, and that development plan was litigated. And I referenced another farmhouse, which had a restrictive covenant and a development plan that didn't allow its use as it is, and the board decided that was okay to build four apartments in that barn. It's a similar thing. We're asking for an adjustment to the development plan to allow the twenty-first is over, is fifty acres, plenty of land, um, and this, this lot is an eight acre lot.
Yeah, I'm scared.
We're not, we're not asking for to relook at litigation. The board had requested background, but that's not really the question at hand. The question at hand is whether or not it's fair to ourselves that you have an agreement with us, and if you don't abide by the agreement, um, then that's what you're doing, and, and I just want to be quite clear that you're not abiding to the agreement between the Helms and West Vinson. That, I think, is the question.
Okay, Joe, can you speak to that? What, what agreement we have with the Helms that allows them to build a property on this lot?
I'm not familiar with any agreement that allows them to build a, a house on this lot.
Well, Joe, you reviewed all of that stuff that Jim sent, right?
That's right.
So you would have seen it if there was something there.
Yeah, do we need to cite? It's page three of the, um, of the agreement, uh, section three, A, stay.
What agreement are you referencing? You keep referencing an agreement. I didn't see anything that said agreement.
Agreement that we signed and West Vinson Board of Supervisors signed. We both have signed this agreement, it's called the Restrictive Covenant Agreement, and that's what is in the property file.
But you're talking about the twenty sixteen agreement?
Twenty sixteen, and there's one, and it was the version, Sarah, that predated it.
Right, I'm just.
And page three, section three, I'll quote it for the audience, conservation lots one A and one B may each contain one separate, single-family dwelling unit. Well, that's the parcel we're talking about, um, the agreement says we can. Apparently, the agreement was entered by the builder, and then the development plan was trailed a little bit, the builder was the owner, and as Joe said, the court system found that they should be held at that time to the development agreement. That's why I asked.
I believe that, I believe the builder was the onsite development manager, not the owner of Southdown Homes. But also, the agreement from way back when, when Southdown was turning it over, that's the agreement that was litigated. When Cook wanted to build a second home on that parcel. So I don't see how we can disconnect those.
Right, Sarah, I'm not asking you to. And so, to be clear, we have an agreement that says I can, the "we" is West Vinson and the Helms. However, there is this litigation that, as Joe said, runs with the land theoretically, you really shouldn't hide it from us, but you have, and it's not in the property file. And we did not buy the property, understanding this at all. We did research the property, but that's besides the point. I, I know that the Board of Supervisors has the, has done it many times, changed development plans. That's all it takes, is the decision to allow the twenty-first house in the development.
I just want to mention for Mike and Bernie's benefit, that the two precedents you're citing are the same settlement agreement between Hank and, and West Vinson Township that were used by Hankin to, um, have those changes. But Hankin's position and their lawyers was the changes that were requested were covered by the settlement agreement. So it's not a, not that we have a series of these, we have that blasted settlement agreement still hanging over our heads.
Right, but there was a separate decision made on the, the farmhouse involving the building of four apartments, that wasn't allowed within the agreement, that was adding four more, four more units, I'm just asking for an addition of one. Do I need to pull that, that document up of the board minutes where they did allow that as precedent?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter what's occurred on other properties, we're looking at the paperwork associated with your property. And there's, there's an issue between whether you can force the township to put in a house, which obviously, in my opinion, you cannot. There's a second issue referenced to where the township must allow you to put in a house. And if they do, then I have to research to see if they can break that conservation easement. So is the board inclined to allow a house on this property or not allow a house on this property? If you're not inclined to allow a house, then it's end of discussion, there's nothing to do with research.
Joe, I'm a little mixed up on your comment, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the conservation agreement as written allows it already, so I'm not asking. I'm not sure I'm understanding why you think the conservation agreement needs to be changed.
Because the matter's already been litigated and interpreted, says you can't build a house. Now, if the board wants to lift the conservation easement, the debate is whether you're allowed to or whether you need the permission of everyone else that's in that subdivision. That issue I didn't look into because I didn't think the board wanted an additional house on this lot. The landowner cannot force you to put an additional house on the lot, so it's strictly your discretion whether you want to allow that or not, knowing that the matter's already been litigated and already decided that you can't put a house there. So what's the board's intention? Do you want them to build a house on that lot or, or not? And if your intention is yes, you do, then it's a different thing to research.
Well, I don't want to go against anything that was written before and litigated on. I mean, if it was written not to have a property on this house, and that's the way it was done, and that's the way it was purchased, with that knowledge, or not knowledge, but it was there. As far as putting a house on there, of course, I have no problem with that, but I just don't want to go against it based on what was agreed upon in the past on this property.
I don't want to get into reversing any easements on properties, that just gets real messy and, um, people can call us out for favoritism, so my answer is.
Sarah, where are you?
I. I'm with the court finding if it, because I, that was the first thing I remembered was we'd already been through this before, quite a while ago, and it was determined that it was not permitted. So that's where I am.
So, so basically, that's, uh, that's the answer.
I, I need clarification first, before you guys vote on this, or.
I don't think there's a vote.
About this, this agreement, it's as though you're ignoring the exist, the agreement we have between the Helms and West Vinson. That, I, that I'm totally mixed up on, because I read the court case, I am not an attorney, Joe, but it definitely said that the, the, the development plan is what was, what was ruled, it didn't, and, and I just want to point out that the township has had fifteen years to adjust this agreement, fifteen years. In the meantime, we bought the property, understanding the agreement between the two prop, the, to, between ourselves and West Vinson. So you've had all kinds of time to change the conservation agreement, and the conservation agreement is sitting there, and if you, what you're saying is that is a void, well, then we'll go and make lots of other changes to the property, too, that, if, if you're saying that the conservation agreement is not in effect. And you, you seems like you want to cherry pick the conservation agreement. And I'm not asking to relitigate something, I know that you can change the reasoning for the, the prior decision, which was that the ruling agreement would be the development agreement, you can change that, you have changed that, so it's within your purview to change that.
Okay, I understand that, but what, which was first? Conservation easement, and then the court case, or the court case, then the conservation easement?
It was the covenant, it was the conservation easement, then the court case, and the court could address the conservation easement.
Correct, that's the way I'm looking, I, that's the way I'm hearing it, so it's already been decided by a court on this issue.
So Mike, you think maybe you should have changed the conservation agreement with the Helms?
You know, you don't, you don't need to, you already had the court ruling.
Yeah, I don't know if you do that every time, I don't, I mean, we have to report, I mean, I don't know, the.
Yeah, I'm with, for me, I'm both, yeah, I, I don't think we mess with conservation easements, I think once they're in place, I'm, I'm really loath to change it.
Want to point out to the Board of Supervisors that you did do that, twenty sixteen, we re-signed a conservation easement, signed by the Board of Supervisors, you had plenty of times to update the conservation easement to make sure that we understood the restrictions of the land. You didn't, so to say you don't do it, that's inaccurate by the evidence in front of the board, you changed it, twenty sixteen.
The only thing changed in twenty sixteen was an adjustment to the meets and bounds to accommodate the trail. That's the only thing that was changed then, had nothing to do with this portion of the covenant, and we don't need to change the covenant, we already have a court ruling interpreting it, to interpreting it, no houses to be built on this property. I, I don't know what, what more you want, if you disagree with the legal position, hire an attorney, appeal our decision, and go from there, but I don't think there's anything more to debate, it's already decided, this case.
So we're, you guys will decide what you want to do, just know that we have options with the property. What we won't do is for this neighborhood, continue to do what we have been doing. This is the best use of the land, but if you want us to use it in a different way, what we will do is ignore the land. That land serves as the entire entryway for the subdivision. I'm tired of paying for maintenance, paying the taxes, paying everything on the land, I will stop. So we, we're asking this because it's the best use of the land. We've tried livestock, our neighbors hated us having livestock, and we agree it was dangerous. It was a crazy plan to put a farm in the middle of a subdivision, my cows in their front yards, not a good idea. So, uh, you know. This is, this is a, more of a complex issue, you're boiling it down to the builder, by the way, he was part owner of the development, the builder who was, found, who should have known at the time, and you're holding me to that standard, yet you never told us that. You never told us that, and you have plenty of opportunity, and you could have adjusted the agreement. I'll shut up.
Okay, there is no vote to be taken by the board, I understand zoning officer already denied the request by, by pulling out the court decision, saying the request is denied, is that, is that true?
No, that's not correct, we've not, we've asked, we've asked for a decision from the board, and, uh, prior to any, any action with the zoning officer. It was clear to us when we learned, we learned of this just a few years ago, that we needed a decision from the board before we did everything necessary, engineering and architectural design for the, for the house. So, yes, we're here to seek a decision by the board of whether or not they would adhere to the restrictive covenant and release the, uh, building of one house.
Right, well, it sounds like the board is, is not prepared to change anything, um, so there's no further motion or discussion you need to have on this item, because the majority of the board is not willing to make any changes.
So the board refuses to make a decision, is what you're saying, or.
Their decision is to not make.
You're electing to default on our agreement.
No, we are not electing to default on your agreement, because we're no, we have no obligation under your agreement, and we are not refusing to make a decision, we're refusing to change a conservation easement that's already been litigated, that's what we're refusing to do, period. And that doesn't require any further action of the board, you don't need a motion that says you're going to do nothing. That doesn't make any sense. So you've made a request for an affirmative action to lift the, construct, conservation easement, and no one on the board is willing to put forth that motion. So that's the end of the story, I don't know how, how better we can explain it than that.
Yeah, this is favoritism, this is favoritism, I'm going to point to Weatherstone, complete favoritism, I'm going to point to that farm right there, complete favoritism, this is inappropriate, in my opinion, because of that. We had no idea, in that case, they knew everything that they were requesting, they were cha, requesting a change, we're requesting a change, and we had no idea, and it is, you guys had plenty of opportunity to update us about this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Wait a moment, we'll move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, next thing.
We have one, we have a hand up.
Okay.
We have a hand up, and also Brian Curry is, he says he doesn't have a microphone on the computer, he can't do it on the phone, tablet doesn't work, be prepared for a lot of reading.
Oh, God, all right.
I don't think he's happy, number one, and I'm going to unmute, um, Yvonne.
Okay.
Uh, hang.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't have my hand up, did I? I meant to.
Yes.
I didn't mean to speak.
I even asked.
I'm still trying to learn how to use this site, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hey, at least you're do, you're doing okay.
Uh, it's, it's a change, thank you.
Okay, do you have Brian's, uh, stuff?
I told him to ask me, and this, he's sending me messages via asking questions, and I asked him to please type the questions in here, and I can read them out loud.
Okay.
He said nothing on this. Okay.
All right, so.
We'll move on.
Okay, number seven is to adopt the twenty twenty-one budget.
I will make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-one budget as advertised.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions from anybody out there?
I don't see anybody's hands up, oh, John Eldridge, hang on one minute, let me unmute him. Go ahead, John.
I still think it's bizarre to have that new reserve established, borrow set five hundred thousand dollars, and you're going to have a seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollar surplus from this year. Uh, I didn't see, seems to be uncounded, but, and if different, we have six funds now, will be seven, maybe eight if I read this. Well, that's all.
I'm completely in agreement with that. So any other questions?
I don't see anything.
Okay, I'm going to tend to vote no on this because of that. But, are all those in favor?
Aye.
No. All right, next, we'll move on to. Alright, next we'll move on to discussion of the farmer's leases.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, last month the board, uh, I think his board's position was to have two one-year leases, one for, uh, Mr. Guest and one for, um, Mr. Miller. Prior to the, um, where's action, the administration did receive a letter from Miller, um, requesting that, uh, his lease be extended for five years. I'm not, we didn't have any, an opportunity to talk with Mr. Miller, um, because I thought it was going to go through, uh, with a five-year lease. Um, I, I, I'm stuck.
So.
Uh, the administration, I, when I, you know, I didn't tell Miller beforehand, uh, about a one-year lease. I don't think he knows about it. Uh, if he does, he's getting it secondhand. Um, I've not had any conversation with any of the farmers. Um, and I, you know, I'm seeking, I'm, I'm looking for, I think, you know, I should give a five-year lease to Miller and um, probably a one-year lease to Guest and next year I'll get direction or authorization from the board to, um, bid out Mr. Guest's, um, lease unless the solicitor says that I can extend it for five years. Um, but that would be for a five-year lease at that point as well. I think the farmers need time to, uh, do, um, longer planning, uh, uh, programs, uh, and a five-year lease is much easier, uh, to accommodate that.
Okay.
The, the leases does require the farmer to, you know, best farming practices and, um, and that kind of stuff. So I'm, I'm stuck here. That's.
Okay, what are the leases that, so we only have one lease that's up right now?
Two.
There's two leases, Miller and Guest.
And Guest is only a one, uh, annual lease?
Is an annual lease, yes.
Okay, but he would be wanting a five-year lease?
He wants a five-year lease.
And who's the, and who's the other leaseholder?
Tom Ozenowski.
And when is that one on?
Another couple of years.
Two more years.
Two more years.
Yeah.
And Mike, next year I would like to, um, do a little assessment of the value. When we guys talked about it, the leases are at three different rates because of when the farmers bid the rate and the township accepted it. That's why they're, we didn't set the price, their bid set the price. So I think next year we might increase them all to something where all three of them are at the same price per acre.
Well, I mean, okay, so that's fine. But like you said, they bid them out, we bid out the leases. So shouldn't we be bidding out the leases when they come up for renewal?
The lease is written so that if the farmer asks for the extension and he's not violated the lease in any way, then he's, it's reasonable to expect it will be continued. So that's where.
But then we're doing a disservice to the taxpayers if we're not getting the best rate for our land. And that's why we have three different, uh, prices on these, because they were bidded out and people bid for them and got them. So by, by renewing them automatically at the same rate doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, that's something, I guess, Mike, that's what I think we're cleaning up our act on this. Bernie and the Sustainability Committee are going to give us some verbiage that they want us to include. We're going to tighten up having all of them closer to identical leases, but we didn't get it done now. This is, their leases are up on the 31st of this month. It's not right for us to leave them holding. So I think we need to do something about the leases. And I think what John is saying is that we didn't notify the Millers before they applied for their five-year extension, that it was our intent to give them one year. And I think that's what he's talking about being stuck, is according to his lease, he can, he can get a five-year renewal. And we didn't tell him otherwise before he initiated it.
Okay, so we have one guy that has a one-year lease. Ken's is up for a five-year lease and the other guy's, uh, leases and.
It's a five-year lease in a couple of years.
How many, I mean, do we know the date or how many years? Two, three?
I think it's two.
Joe?
Two more years. Two more years.
I mean, personally, I don't know if this makes sense, but wouldn't it, uh, make sense to give Ken a two-year lease and, uh, this other guy a two-year lease so they all come at the same time and then we bid them all out again?
Well, if we get it done today, I think that works.
Yeah. And that way it would give the Sustainability time to, uh, come up with the language. The concern of Sustainability Committee is that the farmers really aren't being held to any standard. Um, that would be, let's say, a conservation plan so that the land is not misused and a nutrient plan so that the soil is not exhausted. That doesn't exist in our current leases and it's.
Granted, but, but given a farmer, he's not going to destroy his own land.
But if he's ready to walk away, then at that point.
Maybe, maybe he would, yes.
Okay, but Bernie, you know, all three of these farmers have the next generation of their family working with them. They're not about to walk away anytime soon.
But they could. And I mean, Bernie has a point. They could do that and they could skimp on things, but.
And right now we've got three good conscientious farmers who are following what the lease does call for. Pennsylvania agriculture best management practices, a whole bunch of things like that. Guidance from the county, I believe. I don't have it in front of me, but it's got a lot of stuff in it and.
But that's, I mean, but that should be put into the lease to, uh, have, you know, penalties if they don't do it. Let's just say that. So I mean, I think that's what Bernie's working on, but I know Bernie's working on something a little bit more, uh, involved. But it should at least have the wordage that they have to keep it in a condition to continue farming. They can't let it go. Some, I don't know how that would work and I don't know what the numbers are on soil.
I think that's already in there, Mike. But if we do these two-year leases, what, what it doesn't have is organic farming or non-GMO, right Bernie?
I agree, okay.
Correct, but we're not looking for that. We knew that it was a non-starter from the beginning. So we didn't.
So is everybody in agreement with a two-year lease for both of them?
Yes.
And at, at, at their current rates now.
At the current rate, yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, what's, uh, I mean, we could also make them even. Take the lower of.
Fifty, fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-seven. And fifty-seven wasn't what Stan bid. It's what he was already paying O and J when we adopted the property and Stan and the lease altogether. So.
Alright, well, whatever. We can keep it the same. That's fine.
But, but Mike, there is a, a risk. Right now, the leases call for if the farmer is in good standing, that he may continue there. The leases also say it has to be a West Vinson farmer, if at all possible. And then it goes out to contiguous municipalities. So, um, I, I just, I've heard in the Northern Federation meetings, there's been discussions about, there's a couple of farmers who come in and really destroy the land. They get all the nutrients out and move on. They bid very high bids. So they're awarded the leases and then they.
Right. And that's why Bernie's, and that's why Bernie and Sustainability Committee are going to come up with the language to prevent that from happening.
I, I believe it's already in the lease, but if we can get these leases done today, we'll, we'll have a chance to look at the leases together in the next year before you leave us.
Okay, okay, can we all agree? I mean, should we, uh, make a motion to extend the two leases for two years?
I will make a motion to authorize the farm leases as discussed. Miller for two years, Stan Guest for two years.
Okay, um, any questions out there?
I do not see any hands raised or any.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Alright, moving on, we've got the approval of resolution establishing the real estate tax rate. Somebody want to make that motion?
Go ahead Bernie, you put the tax.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 23 dash 2020, establishing the 2021 tax rate.
I'll second that.
Any questions?
I think only for discussion, we should say we're holding the same rates. It's no change.
Yeah, no, I don't see any hands up, no chats, nothing.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hang on.
I, I, I would make a comment that our tax rate is sort of higher than all our adjoining, uh, townships like East Vinson and precinct mill, et cetera. And, uh, we're winding up with really excessive amounts of funds and reserves in our township.
I agree, John. Um, and you know, a lot of that has to do with the open spaces. Why are tax rates high?
I'm, I'm sorry, a lot of has to do with open space.
I mean, our tax rate has, I mean, is high because in part of the open space, uh, bonds that we issued back in 2012.
I thought the open space bond is paid out of the earned income tax and this is.
Well, it didn't start that way. Well, I don't think it's, it didn't start that way though. I think it, it became a general tax and then it was converted to an income tax later.
I think there was a referendum on the ballot to establish it at point two-five open space. Yes, you're right. Maybe there was open space money spent before that started.
Yes, it was. And that, and that raised our rate and then we did the earned income tax.
Okay.
But you're right, actually. I mean, there is an argument to be made that the taxes should be lowered because of our fund balance, but, I don't know if anybody's willing to do that.
I like our balanced budget the way it is.
I would never recommend, uh, lowering taxes because once you lower them, you'll never get them back.
Well, I don't know if that's true, but the, when the more money a township has or a government has or any company has, the more they're easily spent. That's the other problem. So it's a, it's a toss-up.
As long as you have a, a prudent board, they're not going to be easily spent. They're going to be spent well.
Yeah, but trying to get a, a board that's that conservative is tough. Everybody wants things.
So Brian Curry has, oh, typed a question in here for you guys.
Okay.
He's, he's, his question is, uh, West Vinson Township taxes, obviously reiterating what, what John was saying, are higher than, than any of, any of our touching townships, he said. Has anyone looked at why, what they are doing versus what West Vinson Township is doing? How do they operate with significantly lower rates? West Vinson Township taxes are higher than any of our touching townships, quote unquote. Has anyone looked at what, oh, he typed it over. How are, how do they operate with significantly lower rates?
There's a, a lot in there, Brian, and I think you've heard this discussion before. But for example, Upper Euclid has a lot of commercial properties and they get a lot of tax revenue off of those businesses. We don't have that revenue source. That's just one example.
Right.
Okay.
Open space has an effect on how much it costs to run a township. Because you don't get the tax dollars when everybody has 10 acres or more and puts it in 319, they're paying less. Uh, income is a different story though. We have a very good income base. Uh, so we do well on the income side. And.
He said the other.
We have a lot of, and actually we have a lot of roads, a lot more roads than a lot of these other townships next to us.
DIT is also dedicated.
Yes.
It's, you know, dedicated tax, but he's, he's asking, uh, the other examples are, question mark. I'm not sure what he means by that.
I gave one example and he wants more. This.
Well, again, it's our roads. It's our roads. We have a lot of roads compared to Upper Euclid and the other ones. I mean township roads, that is. So our, our, our costs are going to be higher on the roadside. I don't know if our costs in other areas, I don't know, our, well, yeah, well, our place, of course, is high, uh, compared to East Nap Mill, which doesn't have any, uh, was it South Comer Tree or North Comer Tree doesn't have a police? So these surrounding townships that don't have a police department, that's one-third of our budget, are actually greater than one-third of our budget. So there are reasons out there why we have a higher tax rate.
And Brian, every two years when we have a supervisor race, there's an analysis done by this of the candidates or the candidate supporters and it's posted on the website. And I believe you've been a part of those conversations in the past. So look into your archives and then you could share the information with us.
Is that the only question?
That's it so far, unless he's typing.
Okay, um, let's see, where are we now? Do we approve that? No.
We just spoke.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next on the agenda is the adoption of the fee schedule.
I'll make a resolution, number 24 dash 2020, adoption of the 2021 fee schedule.
I second that.
Okay, I have a question for John. Any changes? Any changes to this fee schedule?
Not yet, no.
Um, any questions out there?
I don't see anything.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next we have the.
I'll make a motion, establish the fiscal performance policies.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions out there? This was discussed last meeting, I think.
John has, John has a question. John Eldridge.
Okay.
Uh, hang on, I have to unmute him. Go ahead, John.
Okay, uh, several questions. One is like on page two, it says, all budgets will be adopted consistently with gap, uh, except for depreciation and applicable. Well, are you going to go to prepaid expenses accrued accounts payable according to GAAP or is that a misprint?
We're doing, next year we'll do modified, um, accrual system. We will put in a depreciation schedule during 2021 of all equipment. And we'll show the depreciation in 2022's budget.
Okay, and it says except for depreciation expense in applicable funds. Which, what are applicable funds?
Uh, the fiduciary funds are not depreciated.
In cash, right?
Yes, they're in cash.
Okay, so depreciate is not applicable, but.
A, you know.
Okay. Um, the. It sounds like you wanted to depreciate everything over $5,000 and it's in some accounts like your new account, your new capital account, some items are going to be less, the computers might be less than $5,000. Should there be some consistency in capital accounts that only capital level equipment be included in that? You're going to mix them up, put more general, it's what I would call the general fund expenses into a capital account.
Yeah.
And John, John, I do have a question. Why wouldn't you depreciate a, uh, computer?
It says nothing less than $5,000 will be depreciated. And most of, well, a lot of computers are less than $5,000.
Well, yeah, but, but why, but, but why wouldn't, why wouldn't you set the li- uh, limit a little lower, like a thousand dollars?
Well, you could, I mean, you'd have to change this, this narrative and set it.
Yeah, I understand. I was just, I was just wondering why five, I was just wondering why 5,000 was picked, that's all. Because computers are less than 5,000.
Yeah, they have computers now that are 900. I wouldn't bother spend, if you're going to have to appreciate them, you have to give them a number, you have to get a ledger for that item, you know.
That's true.
And on and on and on. And so for a $900, a thousand dollar item, it might not be worth it. In business, it's not worth it. Here, Mike. But, uh, it just, uh, seems like that new account has got some expenses and capital and it just seems like to do that. And then um in, like in debit policies in the first paragraph, you consider everything, you're going to borrow money if uh from project revenues. But it doesn't say consider the revenues you get from taxes. In other words, if your tax revenues are high enough, you're not borrowing money. It says that debt issuance will be, shall be used only after consideration, considering alternative funding such as project revenue. How about tax revenues? Instead of debit funding. It doesn't mention that choice here, it looks like. Oh, you don't have to consider taxes. Although the next page, there's reserve policies. It looks to me like this says you're going to set a general fund operating contingency reserve, reserve number eight, is it now? And um that reserve will be maintained at not less than fifty percent of estimated operating expenditure expenditures or fifteen percent, sorry. Uh, is that case? Is, are you setting up another reserve?
No, it, it is. In the general fund, usually you set a reserve. It's not a separate fund. It's the reserve ending fund balance. It, it usually is set around fifteen percent. Sometimes it's a little larger. But it is not a separate fund unless the board wants to set a separate reserve fund, which I don't recommend.
Okay, because then that, then this um it's on this contingency reserve, which now it's not a separate reserve, is between ten percent and fifteen percent. Or if it's less than, if it's between five and ten percent, there's personnel reduction. It just seems like there's a lot of confusion with, there's a contingency reserve. And if it's less than five and ten percent, there's personnel reductions, uh, and then including services. If it's less than five percent, et cetera, et cetera.
What you're talking, what you're talking about is a framework of decision making for the board and the public to discuss. If the reserve fund drops down below ten, fifteen percent, here are the items that the board would, would consider first. If it falls below another threshold, here are the items which your board would affect, would affect. And if it falls below that, here's another set of issues which the board would discuss. So there is some rational decision making for the board to make decisions based on the data that's available.
Okay, what doesn't say that this be discussed by the board, it says steps will be taken.
That, that's what it means. The board will discuss it and take the action. So all, all financial decisions are made by the board.
It's, it's not, it's not automatic, John.
Right?
Yeah, it's not an au- it's not an automatic thing that happens when it gets below there. Decisions have to be made to how to handle it.
That's correct.
I guess what, there also these, this uh reserve, there's a state law that says a reserve can go above twenty five percent of current year's revenue. Uh, and that's an operating expense reserve sometime in state law.
I don't know if it's a law or a, it's a suggestion not to go above that because it's not fair to the taxpayers. I don't think it's a law. Jo- Joe might know if it's.
There is no, there is nothing. There is no law.
I didn't think so, but it is recommended that it doesn't go above that.
Yeah, our reserve now are like almost up to seventy percent of our revenue of the year.
Correct.
I don't know whether there's any norm or content to.
Well, there is a norm and I think it's somewhere around twenty eighteen to twenty percent. I can't remember. I remember reading it lately, but we're far above what is recommended to have as a uh what a fund accounts, uh, cash balance based on revenue and expenses.
Okay. That's all.
Thanks, John. Um, anybody else out there?
Yes, Brian, since he doesn't have audio, I'm going to have to read it and you have to bear with me here. It's very long.
Okay.
Uh. He said the township will strive to maintain a diversified and stable revenue base that will equitably distribute the burden of supporting township services and will protect the township from short, short term fluctuations in any one revenue source. How can the township maintain a diversified base only select, with only select revenue sources? There is also that the township is not zoned for high value businesses that would provide diversification. God, country and motherhood, but not implementable. The requirement of one high, oh, I'm sorry, the retirement of one high income earner in the township demonstrated an issue that I am wondering, based on that statement, I gotta scroll down, hang on. I'm wondering based on that statement, how the township will be addressing it. Advertising for high income folks to locate in the township, that's one possible. There's about four more.
Keep going.
Keep going, okay. The township estimated, the township estimates revenue on an objective and reasonable basis. What are the objective vol- the objective and reasonable basis? Published, the township estimates revenues on an objective and reason, uh, it looks like he's typing it over. The township will seek a balanced revenue base through the act of support of area economic development and diversification and retention efforts. How does that work with the PRPC putting most of the high value commercial development in Phoenixville? And he goes on and says, the township manager will propose and the board of supervisors will adopt a balanced operating budget in which budgeted expenditures, expenses do not exceed reasonably estimated revenues for the fiscal year. This seems to say that a balanced budget is a goal. An earlier TM, I'm assuming that means township manager, said that a balanced budget is a state requirement. Which is it? And there's more.
I think it is. I think. Go ahead, keep going.
Okay. The townships will establish ser- service measurements for all program areas when feasible. The service measures will reflect the demand, workload capability and projected outcomes for the program to accomplish its goals and objectives. Who will be doing the measurement work of those service metrics? Does the action described here require that another person be added to the township staff? If so, what is the benefit versus the cost? And there's more. Should I go on?
Yep.
The township will encourage delivery of services by other public and private organizations whenever and wherever greater efficiency, effectiveness and service can be expected as well as to develop and internally use technology and productivity advancements that will help reduce or avoid increased personnel costs. The intent is to increase personnel costs as a proportion to the total budget. To more productively and creatively use available resources and to avoid duplication of effort and resources. Does this mean that there will be an evaluation done for quote unquote rent a police force? There's more. Did I pause or go on?
I don't know. Is he keep, is he uh continuing to write as you read?
I think so.
All right, well, we can't go on all night with this. There'd be a suggestion of Brian to send these questions to the manager and he could distribute it to us and we could, I don't know, try to answer them.
Joe, is that we would have to be, we would have to uh read it in a public meeting now, I would think.
Yeah. It's public comment. Um, is there any way?
There's a limit.
Is, is there any way to get him to tie in so he can just talk?
I know.
I tried earlier.
And part of what he's doing is quoting, quoting the policy, right?
Yeah, with a few questions in it.
I don't know how to handle this. This could go on all night.
Um, let me see how much.
Joe, can we invoke the uh three minute rule here?
Can you what?
Can we invoke the three minute rule here?
Oh, I'll, I'll settle for a ten minute rule.
He is. I don't know how you do the three minute rule when you're not allowing the guy, when the guy can't speak because of the.
I know.
Well, let me just read a couple more and we'll see how long it takes.
Okay, all right.
I'll read faster than he types.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Is my video still up?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I don't see any of you people at all. I have no screen at all.
The township will maintain a budgetary control system to help it adhere to the adopted budget and will prepare and maintain a system of regular fiscal reports comparing actual revenues and expenditure expenses, expenses to budgeted amounts. Do we have that now? Yes, Brian, we have.
Yes, we, we've been, we've had that for a long time. Go ahead.
The township will reflect for each property, I'm sorry, will we reflect for each project, the likely source of funding, the priority ranking of each project and attempt to quantify the project's impact to future operating expenditures. Will this look back? What are the ongoing expenses concerning the Brink Co Ed property?
Well, that changes, so, I mean, there is no more expenses right at this moment, but if we, uh, the board decides to do something, then that will be brought up in a public meeting and discussed.
Okay.
And or budgeted for the following year, just like everything else.
Right. All equipment projects and improvements, other than infrastructure, with a value equal to or greater to than five thousand dollars per unit and an estimated life greater than or equal to three years, will be capitalized for financial reporting purposes. Infrastructure assets, including streets, bridges, drainage projects, parks, trails and building improvements, five K sounds low. By law, even only three telephone bids are required at about ten K level. He's speaking on that policy.
Yeah, he's, he's speaking on the depreciation stuff, uh, the recording of assets. I don't know. I mean, it's nice to have a complete list of your assets. So whether you do that separately, which you should, um, so you know what you have. And then just as far as financial reporting, depreciate things that are over five thousand, ten thousand, whatever it is.
Right.
That's a decision. And we've already, we picked five thousand dollars apparently, so that's what we're going with.
Right, and I, for insurance purposes, I think it was at one point even a thousand, so.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering earlier, but that's okay.
So, but Mike, this, this is, these documents that he's asking about are board policies. They're things that we will use to.
Yeah, all right, I know.
Our decision making and John will use to decide, to guide his recommendations to us. So I don't think there, it's not that we're passing that as an ordinance. It's just policy.
Right. Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Capital projects and improvements will be constructed to A, project oh, sorry, protect or improve the township's quality of life. B, protect or enhance the commu- community's economic vitality. I thought by law that townships were supposed to be concerned about the health and welfare and some, and something else. Where does quality of life and economic vitality come in?
Well, quality of life, I don't know why that would be in there so much, but the uh, the other one should be in there because that has a, an impact on health and safety. I mean, does he have questions in here or is he just reading what we're?
Well, it seems like he's stating what he's questioning, so. And in the next issue, he has the scheduled maturity of bond issues should not exceed the expected useful life of the capital projects or improvements financed.
I agree with that, yes.
Right, is that?
That should be.
Yes, it should be, yes.
Yes.
Uh, let's see, the next one. The township will encourage and maintain communications with financial bond rating agencies and continue to strive for improvements in the township's bond rating. Who, who will be doing that? Uh, right now, Moody's does that every year, we have to put, you know, they, they require that, that I upload a bunch of documents to them and.
Right, so we're do- we've been doing that, okay.
Yes, nothing's going to be changing with that.
Next.
And, and the responses shared with the taxpayers, yes, that is.
Yes.
Yes, okay. The township will coordinate its debt issues, issuance with other local government agencies in an effort to review overlapping debt in the community. And then he asks, how will that be done? Has, has it ever been done? Are there any? What's that?
I have no idea.
Are there any conflicts? Will the other local governments agree to? Do they have similar documents?
Who knows when it happens? I guess you'll find out. Anything else?
Yep. The general fund contingency reserve will be maintained at not less than fifteen percent of estimated operating expenditures. Where is the township with respect to that right now?
All right, seventy some percent apparently to John.
Right.
Okay, next.
Going to change because we're creating that new, that new uh fund that we're going to be moving money over.
Michelle, he, he wasn't listening when Mike answered that previous. So.
Okay.
Keep going, next.
The reduced balance requirements, who developed them, the basis for them?
I mean, the fifteen percent, I think that's probably just, I don't know. What is that, John?
Well.
It's just.
I mean.
The percentages, the percentage is one that's recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. The, the framework is taken from uh best management practices uh throughout municipalities throughout the, the country. Um, you don't want to lay people off. You want to see how you can modify your service delivery. Um, you can modify programs. Um, uh, you know, it's just, it's a format, as I said earlier. To, to guide the board and the public, it should um, your fund balance, you know, reduce below a certain point in terms of if you're going to make some decisions, here's things you should look at first, second and third. They're not saying you're absolutely, you have to do it. It's a framework.
Right, okay, anything else?
The replacement equipment will be based upon adopting the adopted equipment replacement schedule. When will that schedule be available?
Sometime during the year, next year.
Okay, next.
Investment and cash management policies. What will the impact of the actions be on current ones and location of them?
Nothing, no impact. It's generally what you're doing now.
Yeah, the township treasurer or designated representative will provide the board of supervisors with monthly information concerning cash position and investment performance. Will the board of supervisors report that info to the taxpayers monthly? That's what I provide now, Brian.
Right, next.
The request for banking services will be issued when it's deemed necessary to provide services as required by the township but not less frequently than every five years. The request will be made to all qualified banks located within township limits that are capable of providing the level of service required. Are the current banks being used, are the current banks being used within the township limits? What banks are within the township limits? We use S and T and Pliggett is not. It's actually, it's not Pliggett, it's P F M, so.
Right.
But yes.
But we do use, we do use local banks when it makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
And coming to the end, from the township meeting notice on the website, we encourage residents to provide public comment by submitting comments via email to office, blah, 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 prior to the meeting to be read aloud. Repeating, who prepared, oh, who prepared the fiscal policy? John, I said it was kind of a it was looked over by Joe, correct? Was it looked over by Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
And Tom looked at it and I looked at it, so. And Tom looked at it and I looked at it, so.
It's multiple people.
Yes, I, that, so I told him it was a, a group effort, but he, I guess, wanted me to read that out loud.
Okay, and that's it?
That's it, we're at the end.
All right.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, so what, so what were we doing? We were on the.
I think we need to vote.
What were we doing?
We're establishing the policies and I think there was a motion and we need to vote.
Oh, all those in favor? Aye.
John has.
I make the motion to authorize the advertisement of the 2021 meeting schedule.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions?
Uh, John has a question, John Eldridge.
Okay.
He's unmuted. Go ahead, John.
Okay, I, I was, this goes back ways. I had my head a long time ago, but I want to read something that, that is piece of paper for Pennsylvania General Assembly, 1993 Act 69. The board of supervisors may annually make and make appropriations from the general township fund to the operating reserve fund for the appropriation. No appropriation shall be to the operating reserve fund. Uh, if the effect of appropriation would cause the fund to exceed 25% random of the estimated revenues of the township general fund in the current year. Now, whether that applies here or not, but this supervisors can do with their general fund. I, I think that's the state, this is state law, this is the law.
I don't think it's a law, John. I think it's just a recommendation.
Okay.
And I think it's from that organization, Pennsylvania, something.
But I'm, yeah, it's Pennsylvania General Assembly.
Yeah.
On the data point.
Yes, it is. Any other questions?
I do not see any other questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have the reorganization meeting date. Do we have to make a motion or just an announcement? Is this an announcement? For Monday, January 4th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Okay, and I guess next is the discussion of stormwater management ordinance waiver request.
Ryan has that one, Mr. Chairman. Is he still around?
Yes, I'm here. Kathy, can you make me the presenter so I can share my screen?
Uh. Let me stay here. Can you do it, Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
See, one second. It's, I try to, I'm trying to make sure I get the right screen. It's not telling me which screen it is, so I'll try.
There we go.
Which screen am I sharing? Did you see a plan? I can't tell which.
Yes.
Okay.
Got a plan, good.
Good. Okay, this is different. It does not give me the, the controls, but I will, I'll build my way through it. So before tonight, the board, um, is a request from Toll Brothers to, uh, for a couple waivers, I believe it's three waivers from your stormwater ordinance. First waiver is from section 305A for the post-construction runoff volume. Second waiver is from section 306C for the infiltration, one inch, minimum one inch or the total water, water quality volume. And the third waiver is for the relief from section 308A for reduction of the peak flow rates. Um, some background on this. This basin that we're discussing, which is in the screen in front of you, is the Stormwater Basin that was approved for construction for the Sunderland Avenue extension. Um, it is, as you can see on the screen, let me get a highlighter here. Give me one second. This area right here is the intersection of Eagle Farms and Sunderland Avenue. So this basin has been, uh, approved and on the books since approximately 2003. It went through multiple iterations with the Chester County Conservation District and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the NPDES permit or National Pollutant Discharge Limitation System. It's a national federal permit. It is currently under permit. That permit, uh, was issued and in that permit, this basin was designed and approved as an infiltration basin. The basin was constructed in 2019 and, uh, they were working to finish it this year to convert it from its sediment configuration into it's a permanent stormwater configuration. When they went to convert it, they encountered ground seeps. There is groundwater that is entering the, entering the basin from below and also from the embankment, which is this area right here I highlighted. Water is coming through the back, the upper side and into the basin and keeping the basin full. Those of you who have may have seen it, it looks like it's always full of water or has water in it. They've done multiple iterations of testing. They've tried to remediate the bottom, tried to um, work with the bottom soil, adding stone, adding sand, adding, um, additional, uh, topsoil and compost to it to make it do water, and they have had not, have not had any luck. The process then becomes where the applicant, Toll Brothers, has approached the Conservation District and D E P to do a corrective action plan for this basin, since the basin is now in violation of the NPDS permit because it is not infiltrating. They've gone through five or six iterations of the corrective action plan with the Conservation District and with Arrow for reviewing it. The concept they're, they want to propose is a, is the managed release concept or MRC, as it is known by the P A D E P. The MRC is a alternative method approved by the D, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection or P A D E P in instances where infiltration is not feasible on the project. For example, the two lots subdivision, sorry, three lots subdivision with two new lots at Blackworth 322 Road has been approved with an MRC concept. Just so you know that it is something that has come before you before. So they have proposed to install a managed release concept or MRC and retrofit this basin. What that means is there'll be a subsurface remediation of the basin. There's a detail of it in this area right here. That subsurface will be a compost on top of a bedded, uh, layer of stone, which will allow the water to filter, filter through the compost, filter into the fine stone, and make its way into the underdrain. The underdrain is to, is a four inch underdrain. Managed release concept, what it does is it controls the water and releases it very slowly over a long period of time. It does not promote infiltration. The problem with this basin for infiltration is the, um, ground, seasonal high groundwater that's coming up from the bottom. When this basin was tested years ago, the groundwater was several feet below the basin elevation it is now. Over time, with the change in hydrology locally that we've had, everybody's seen how it's been over the last few years, groundwater has risen. So this basin is now encountering groundwater. Before you tonight are these three waiver requests. The first waiver request is, like I said, from section 305A, which deals with the infiltration volume. Since this is going to become an, an MRC or managed release concept basin, they will not be providing infiltration in the basin. And they're requesting a waiver to allow this basin to be constructed without infiltration. The Arrow has no objection to the waiver because the MRC is an approved alternative design to infiltration. And for instances like this, we would, we would, uh, recommend that if any of these waivers are granted, they be conditioned upon the approval from the Conservation District being obtained and provided to the township. Second waiver is related to the first waiver, which requires you to infiltrate the one inch of runoff from all impervious surfaces. Since this basin is not functioning as infiltration basin, that section requested be a waiver as well from the, from the applicant. That is section 306C from the Stormwater Ordinance. And the last, um, waiver request is from section 308A from the post-construction stormwater management reduction of the rates. Your ordinance requires that the one, two, and five-year peak events be reduced below the current pre-development rates. This project's pre-development rates were indeterminate at the time of the latest application because of the changes to the ordinance and also that the, um, project as approved from the first time this project was issued, reduction rates were not in effect at that time. So currently, the ordinance requires the five, sorry, the one, two, and five-year post-development events to be reduced below, um, the storm event below them. The five-year event and the two-year event as proposed will be below, the existing will be meet, the reduc- will do not exceed pre-development rates, but they aren't being reduced to the rates as required by the ordinance. The, to reduce the rate, they could not do an MRC design because an MRC requires a minimum sized orifice to release it. So to do the MRC design, which is to get, which is required as an alternate design by the D E P, they can't comply with your real, uh, release rate reduction. The only way they can comply is release rate reduction to provide infiltration. They've reduced the, um, discharge to as low as they possibly can for D E P requirements. I've reviewed all their information and I do not see any other way that they can retrofit this basin um, in its current location or in its current configuration without becoming, um, without this MRC concept. So before tonight are these three waivers and I would recommend that the board consider granting these three waivers so the project can move forward to completion.
Okay, is there any issue with this MRC system?
No. This MRC was developed and developed by the D E P, the actual, all the information for it was developed and put out with a, what they call white paper by the D E P by Dominic Rocco at the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. He is the one who put the white paper out a couple of years ago.
Okay, so how does this work on all these things? If we, uh, approve the changed MRC, are we liable if it fails, if it fails?
No, they are under a stormwater maintenance agreement that they, being the applicant, the landowner, it must, is required to maintain this basin.
Forever.
Forever.
So where does this managed released water go to?
There is a stream. Let me get over to it. I draw a line for you here, Bernie, so you can see. Comment. This blue spot right here is where they're going to be releasing the water from the MRC. That's the new release point. The end of the red line right here where I'm, I'm turning down and making it go straight, that's the stream bank. So they're releasing it into the same stream it's currently going to. What the MRC does is it holds the water back longer and releases it at a much, much slower rate than a standard basin. The idea is to allow the native plants in the bottom to uptake as much water as it can and also for vapor transpiration over time while it slowly releases the water.
Okay, are we talking just stormwater?
Yes.
Just stormwater.
This is just stormwater management. This collects the water runoff from the northern, the northern portion of the Sunderland Avenue, the north side of the stream crossing.
Okay.
The Eagle Farm Road side.
Yes.
Conservation District has bought into, um, where we're going to send this water to?
Yes, their permit controls that. This water has not, the, the location of the water has not changed.
It's just a method.
Yeah, this spot right here I just highlighted and I just circled here in red. This is the current outlet point of the basin. So they're, they're discharging in the same location to the same stream. So the, the amount of water the stream is getting is not changing. They're actually slowing the water down by doing this for the high-level storm events will release slower than they currently do. The low-level storms will release because they're not infiltrating. Currently, low-level storms, the one, two, and five-year storm are currently designed to not release because that, the one and two are designed not to release because infiltration. There was a slight release in two and a small release in five-year. All the storm events now will be reduced because of the, and what, the managed release concept.
Okay.
Brian.
Yes.
What effect does all of this have on getting that road open?
Without this, they can't open the road.
Well, um, I love that the D E P and the Conservation District are happy with it because I don't think we, they're going to trump us anyway. But, um, so what's your estimate in when the?
Road will open. Uh, John, have you heard anything from Toll about the status of the signs that they ordered?
No, I have not.
Okay. Right now, the item that is keeping the road closed is the signage. Getting the, getting the proper signage installed and ordered. I know they had to order it and it's on back order. So we're looking at, uh, hopefully the next eight weeks maybe till the signs come in. I'm not sure I can confirm with Toll when the signs will be in. But we don't have the proper road signs, the stop signs and all that that they've ordered or not in yet, to my knowledge. This basin then will be completed, which is outside, they've, they've, the toll has to, I've asked the question if Toll can retrofit this basin without accessing the road and they have not gotten back the answer back to me yet because they don't have an approved plan. They can get bid by their contractor. So if contractor still needs to use the road to access it, the road should stay closed because if Toll damages, damages it, they're liable for it. So that is the, the controlling factor is going to be if Toll can access the basin and their contractor can do all the work in the basin without using the road. The last step of approval from Conservation District is a letter of consistency from me as the town manager saying the project is consistent with your ordinance. I cannot provide that letter until these waivers are granted.
Okay, so when are we approving this?
You would, if you, if you would grant the waivers tonight, I can issue Toll, Toll a consistency letter. It's not an approval letter, it's a consistency letter that says this is consistent with your ordinance. So the Conservation District can provide their approval. Once the Conservation District applies their approval, then I can, then I can issue the formal final approval from the township to authorize construction.
Okay, well, we don't have a motion for this at this time.
Well, it wouldn't, wouldn't take much, but, so Brian, you mentioned this was approved a long time ago, but the Sunderland Road extension is a relatively new conveyance, so, um, there was no sign of this problem when they did the grading over there.
The Sunderland Avenue extension was in the original NPDS approval. So this basin was part of that.
Oh, okay, so all of that.
So this basin was never taken, this basin was never taken out of that because it still took care of some of Eagle Farms Road.
Okay, so all of that discussion with the planning commission about the slopes and the basins and stuff, that was all just, there was nothing new there?
The slopes and the configuration of Sunderland was new, but the basin itself was always in this location from the original approval. What, what the Sunderland Avenue extension.
We should have relooked that at the time, right?
It was under an active NPDS at the time, so there was, it was already a permanent basin, yes. It was already approved. It was already exact, it was actually already constructed at the time because it was constructed for Eagle Farms Road.
Okay, so should we make a motion, uh, granting these three waivers with the condition that it's accepted by somebody, you said?
Conditions that it's approved by the, that approval from the Conserva- Chester County Conservation is, is provided to the township.
So, second.
Okay, any comments or questions from anybody?
Did you catch that, Kathy?
I did.
You're wonderful.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Michelle, are there any questions?
There was. Yvonne put her hand up and then took it down, so I don't. Uh, Brian Curry had a couple statements, but I'll wait till public comment.
Okay, moving on to cover, uh, public comments. Okay, moving on to covering public comments.
All right, so Yvonne keeps putting her hand up and putting it down. And Barry put it up and put it down. Oh, now it's up, now they're both up. All right, I'm going to read Brian Curry's first. He wants to know. I want to be sure I'm scrolling up to where he wanted me to start. Okay, he said, "When there is a return to physical meetings, will everyone attending be required to identify themselves? Go around the room doing introductions, late arrivals have to declare themselves." I answered, but I was told I have to.
No, it will continue as it was in the past.
Right, my answer?
When they speak.
My answer was, with Zoom, we were having problems with no-name people in the meeting, hijacking the meetings. That's why we insisted in knowing who we were admitting to the meetings. With this platform, only we can see the attendees, it's safer. In a public meeting, which is recorded, then put online later, you must state your name and address before speaking. No, you will not need to introduce yourselves to attend the meeting, only to speak, nothing changes.
Perfect.
And then he said, "Who is monitoring the township email account? Those late registering during the meeting, attending by phone." Kathy, I think that's you, right?
Yeah, and, and they actually, the link is on the website, so they can link into it by phone or by the website link, so.
He's registering now.
He's what?
He mentions late registering, so the link is to register?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that'll take him right into it then.
All right, then he said, scrolling down, hang on. "What are the other services from the registration page that may be done? How can one attend without accepting the other services? Why is the acceptance of other services required?" And I said, my reply to him was, "I'm not sure what that is. I did not get prompted to accept any other services. Perhaps that is a phone thing, I'm not sure." And I'm sure you, like, I told him, you know, there's probably a lot of Q and A's on the GoToWebinar website.
There are, and the other services, I'm not quite sure what he's talking about, so we'd have to look at that.
Did anybody else get any other services?
No.
Okay, yeah, I didn't think so. It must be a phone thing, and then.
Special for Brian.
Yeah. One more, "Why was the GoToWebinar system tested before the meeting, not during the meeting?" And I told him, "I believe it was tested during a committee meeting. Anything new is always acceptable at first, until we all learn the features, et cetera. Many other townships use this platform with much success."
It was tested in our executive session, the sustainability meeting and the Planting Commission.
Okay.
I do have a question, though. So right now, I'm looking at the screen, I only see certain people. So do you have the ability to not allow video?
You can turn yours off, you should.
No, 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 do you, the host, have, I mean, do the people that are signing into this have video ability?
They do, I believe so, right Kathy?
They do, they can see the present, they can see the panelists. We just can't see them.
That's what I mean, so we can, we can't see them. So right at this point, using this system, there's no reason for anybody to identify themselves coming into the meeting. So unnecessary.
They have to, to get in. It's part of, it's part of this platform.
It's to register.
Oh, okay, oh, it's a register thing.
Yeah, just to register the name, but, but I told him, I said, "It's safer because you can't see everybody's name, it's private."
That's right, okay.
It's private. We can see it.
Well, I can't even see who's on here.
Yeah, we can't.
Only you guys can see it.
Okay. Now Yvonne has her hand up, so I'm going to unmute her.
Okay.
And let me turn this little thing off here. Lower here. I'm still trying to learn how to use this thing, but I'm doing okay with it. But one of my questions relating back to the issue that we're discussing, and this may just be a general comment, and if I do, I'm apologizing. But what I have seen over the years is that developers have an opportunity to try and close over springs that are on a property and try and, I forget the name of the clay that they try and put over these things. But that only means that the water is going to go somewhere else. Because water must will out one place or the other. And I'm very concerned about this issue, which may not apply to all of this. But you can't just close over springs and say, "Well, they don't exist anymore." They do, and they will come up. They won't come up in the same place necessarily, but they'll come up somewhere else. And I consider that a big problem in water management.
So Brian, do you have a comment on that? You're muted.
Sorry, I hit too many buttons here. I unmuted, then muted myself when I turned my camera on. Yvonne, that is the main crux of their problem. So I'm going to draw two lines on the screen. I don't have sharing capabilities anymore, I'm sorry. So, so this design is proposing a stone bed under a bed of compost. The stone bed is to allow the spring that's coming up out of the ground to enter the basin and leave and get to the stream. The current design is holding all the water in the basin and can't go anywhere. So this is designed to allow this, allow any of the groundwater seep or the spring, as they're calling it, to... So the spring would, so this pipe I've just sketched here in red is a perforated pipe to allow for the seasonal high underwater, under seasonal high water to drain from the backside of, from the wall, from the upper side of the basin. Allow it to come in, catch the water in a pipe, and bypass it through the basin and let it discharge into the stream. So they're not looking to cap off any of the, like you say about capping off the spring, this design is actually designed to allow the water to pass through the basin and out, where currently it's coming into the basin and can't go anywhere, the current way it's currently designed.
Thanks, Brian.
I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me yet or not. I just raised my hand again.
We hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay, but have you folks measured the amount of water that can come out of that spring? And I'm not familiar with this one. I only know a couple of the ones that are in Matthews, used to be in Matthews Meadows and up at Ludwig's Corner. And I really, I just questioned this whole thing. I mean, you're saying to me that this is all managed, and I hope that you are correct. But I see issues around the township where this doesn't work, where it's not being funneled into the right place. And I'll let you go there, but I just want to make sure that everybody is paying attention to that issue because there's a lot of water down below the township building that never used to be there 30 years ago. And I can name at least one other spot that I'm aware of where the water has to go somewhere. And I want to make sure that you are all looking at this issue because it just doesn't go away and come up in Upper Euclid, although I suppose it might in some areas. But that would not be fair to them either. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions out there?
Yes, Barry has his hand up. Barry, there we go. It's not a line. There we go, Barry.
Hey, first time caller, long time listener. I am with Wheeler, because he does not have capabilities of that, they're interweb, and he had a question pertaining to his property. There's supposed to be an engineer out there at a meeting, and he's heard nothing. So I will let you guys address that. Wheeler's here, you can speak with him.
Good evening. Yeah, we have a problem with Ford Road. This is a dirt road coming off of Pewtown Road. Most of you are familiar with that. I know a number of you have been there. However, you've not been there with me. And we really need to get some help from the township. That's what we're after. The township has a right-of-way that comes down Ford Road. This is a historic road. It was not named for the car, it was named for the fact that it crossed French Creek. And they did this with high-wheeled wagons and so forth. And then they put something in there that was rather unique. They put a cable bridge in. And the embuppments are on both sides of the French Creek now. The bridge is gone, but there's a certain historic value there that I would think is worth considering. There's a lot of talk that Ford Road doesn't exist going to French Creek, and of course, that's silly. It does exist, but it's not passable at this time.
Hey, let me interrupt.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, he's going to rehash a whole bunch of stuff that's already been over. John, you said that an engineer was going to be out there within a week after the last time we spoke, which was a month and a half ago. Has the engineer been out there? He's contacted.
Listen, I think the issue really is where, where, right-of-way is, where the centerline of the road is. Without, without it being marked with a degree of certainty, we're all spinning our wheels. I would suggest that the parties agree to have the township survey the parcel, mark it, flag it, put permanent markers in. The parties would agree to pay for, help pay for the cost, and that'll solve the problem. Absent that, you know, I'm sorry that, you know, it's, that's, to my estimation, the best way to determine who, where things are on the, out in the field. An engineer can go out, I can go out, the board members can go out, anybody can go out and say, "Yeah, there's the line." And everybody will walk away with a different interpretation until it is permanently with a survey, with the appropriate markers and some flags, so we understand it. It's the only way we're going to, anybody's going to understand where the right-of-way is and the centerline of the road.
Okay, so you cut out a couple of times, John, so just to, I need to just get some clarification because it froze up. So you're saying that they did not come out when you said they were going to come out within a week? Is that what I understand?
Listen, I can come out, I can come out later this week, but I'm not, what am I going to do? I've been there, I've seen it, I understand the issues. You're not going to solve the issues until it is laid out on a permanent basis.
Answer yes or no, if you're going to come out or not.
So I think that was the question about getting, Barry, there was a question about getting current surveys from both of the landowners. And what I understand is we only got one of them, is that, but we didn't get something from Wheeler? And then there was a legal situation that put us on hold for a while, and I believe that's out of the way now, so.
All I'm looking for is an answer, did an engineer come out there or not? You said an engineer was going to come out.
Yeah, already said, no.
I've been there, I've seen it.
And you're the engineer?
No, I'm not. You asked if the manager was there, and I told you I was there.
I'm an engineer, I said engineer, because you said an engineer was going to come out. That's, that was the first question that, that, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to speed this up so everybody can go home. Okay, so an engineer did not come out, and so the next thing is, the question was, and the question was left with, does the right-of-way still exist, or the easement, does it still exist?
The right-of-way exists. The right-of-way exists until it's vacated by the township.
Great, I didn't know it was being vacated, and Wheeler had no idea. And again, I'm just, I'm just looking for answers because Wheeler will drag this thing out and we'll be here all night. So the, the next thing is, is, is the wood supposed to be, is there supposed to be things placed on that right-of-way or easement?
I don't know, because we don't know where the right-of-way or easement is. That's the problem. If you listen to what I said, it needs to be surveyed and monuments need to be set. Until that occurs, nobody's going to know with any definitive certainty where things are.
Okay, so if it's a, well, that really wasn't the answer for that because are things supposed to be on the right-of-way or easement? But skip that, so the, the next question is, since it is the township easement right-of-way, who does the survey and who pays for the survey?
I'm suggesting, all parties have a stake in the issue. Township would select the surveyor. Parties would agree to pay one-third each.
We've, we've already had a survey come out, and they were trying to verify, but they didn't run the whole property. There's no, there's no starting point, there's no basis. Follow what I'm saying?
Which, why, we need to do a new one.
John, this is important.
Okay, so what's, what's being said is that a complete survey has to be done first, before an engineer can go out, well, I guess you don't need an engineer after the survey's done, then you can see where the right-of-way is.
Right.
Right now, you have surveys that don't go all the way to the creek, right? Is that correct?
True.
What's that?
Three surveys to agree?
There are surveys, we're not sure they're, they have not been moved. That's what I'm not sure of.
Well, the survey can't get moved, so if you have a survey, then somebody can go out there.
He needs, he means the markers, Mike, that's what he means, so.
Oh, well then, okay, if the markers have been moved, then what do you do? Do you have another survey and new markers put in? Probably.
Oh, we had to pay for that survey ourselves.
So, okay, so their proposal is, this is, this is the manager's proposal, give me one second, guys, is that the, in order to work this out, that each one of them, because everybody has an interest in it, both property owners and the easement holder, which is the township, you all pay one-third of a survey to get this squared away, which I think is a very fair deal.
I do, too.
Yeah, well, you would say that because you didn't pay for one that didn't produce a line that it's marked out. All they did was survey and run between the points.
Okay, well, that's what you're looking at.
What, what do we need, an agreement from me tonight on that, or what?
From all three parties, I guess.
I will, I will craft a letter to both proper tomorrow stating that this is, this is the plan and get the agreement from both parties in writing before we go forward.
Do you need, do you need us to agree to pay one-third tonight?
Yeah. And, and yes, if you, yes, that would be preferable, yes.
John, would you send that letter to the attorney, my attorney? You're getting correspondence with him.
Who, who is, who is speaking?
That was Wheeler.
Wheeler.
Yes, I'll send it to Walco, yes.
Yes.
All right, Sarah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you asked.
I asked if we needed to agree to our portion tonight, in which case Bernie and Mike and I have to talk about that a little bit. It is a, I believe this is a civil matter between two property owners.
Oh, no, it's not, Sarah, that's not.
The reason it involves us is because we're talking about the road continuing from where. The reason it involves us is because we're talking about the road continuing from where it is down to the creek.
Well, because it might have shifted, the road may have shifted, and that may, that is the problem, so. We need to do a survey to make sure we're still in the same area that we're supposed to be in.
Did we ever get the answer from Dirt and Gravel Roads about the sort of growing up on a dirt road, it was roads, dirt roads end up where they end up, and that's where, you know, so there couldn't be a right of way out here, but the right of way on Davis Lane could have been marked out a hundred years ago.
But it, but it's up to the township to keep the roads within their right of way. I mean, that's the township's, you know, I know, uh, roads move and it happens, but if some, if a property owner says, well, the road's now on my property where it's not supposed to be, then it's really the township's responsibility the whole time to keep the road in the same location. So, and that's why I would agree to the, um, the survey, because, you know, we could have moved that road by just nature and us plowing and graveling and whatever we do over the last 50 years.
Like, the three of you, of your supervisors have been down there at, at different times, and if you think back to the hill going down to the kennels itself.
Yeah, but I.
It's barely one car road, and when it.
I understand that, Wheeler, but I don't know where the road was back when the township took or made it their road.
Let me describe the condition, Mike.
No, 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 Wheeler, no, we need the, we need the survey to tell us where the road is, and where, where the road shouldn't be. And then after that, we can discuss anything else, but right now, we don't know where the road actually is. We know we can walk it, and we can say, well, it should be over here, and it shouldn't be over here, but until a survey's done, we don't know that.
All right, I, I, I would think it would be a, a, a point that the township would want to do the survey and pay for that.
Well, we would, well, why, Wheeler, we'd never want to pay for something that's not necessary. Okay, so we have two property owners that say different things, and there's, you know, some ones, or a couple of them are saying it's been moved, it's changed so forth, and it's affecting their property, then there's a reason for everybody to get a survey done to find out where it is. And I, hey, John, how much is a survey?
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah, it's gonna be probably less than $3,000, I, it depends, you know, we all, we all monuments set, that's, that's gonna be, you know, part of the cost, most of the rates don't, don't require that.
So, we're not, we're not talking about a huge sum of money here, so it's a thousand dollars each. To solve the problem, I just think that's a very easy thing to decide.
Would, would you, where, how would you serve, well, first of all, who would you get to survey?
I don't know. Do you have somebody?
Get it from.
Would you be surveying the entire Austin property?
We'd have to. I would suspect that he would start at the beginning of the road, it's the top of the hill, he needs, he needs to start.
There, there is no survey point there.
And that's the.
There's a monument over near the creek.
You come down the entire length of the road.
Yeah, but, so from Pewtown Road down.
But, right.
Oh, no, 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 well.
So, Wheeler, are you only concerned about Austin's property line?
No, I can't hear you, say it again, please.
Are you only concerned about from Austin's property line down to the creek?
More or less, yes.
Oh, I mean, personally, I think it should be done from Pewtown Road all the way to the creek, so we know where the road is supposed to be, period. But why do half of it, just because you only concerned about that part, the township really wants to know where the road should be. That's my opinion, but.
They need to get their ballot put out of it, so, exactly.
Can you get us an estimate of what that should cost? I, I've already paid for a survey, all right, and they didn't, the survey didn't have the two lines come together. This is supposed to be a straight line along Austin property.
John, can, can you get the estimate on the survey before?
I'll get a couple estimates, yes.
Thank you. So Wheeler will get in, John's gonna write to you and Steve, and he'll include an estimate that the township will get for the survey for the full length from Pewtown to the stream.
All right, um, I, I don't object to that, but it's, it's not necessary, that's, that's not where the issue is. The issue is simply along the proper.
Hey, Jay, uh, we are, the issue, the issue, you're right, your, your issue is down lower. But someday, you might come back and say, now we have an issue up front, and then we're doing this again, let's just do it once and get it over with. And do the whole road.
That, that was surveyed when, um, Camp Hill sold their property rights.
It's better to just have it done and be done.
They, they ran the survey then, the whole length.
Well, I guess you could talk, I mean, uh, John could talk to the surveyor and say, is this a good enough point to use the other survey and then just go from there, I don't know, I don't know how it's done, so. Alls we want to know is the complete road from Pewtown to the creek, period.
Yes, I, I understand that.
Okay, how it's done, I don't care.
Mike, listen to me a second, there, there is a, you know where the, the Wolf Pens were over on Camp Hill's ground?
I have no clue.
There, there is a monument over there, a marble monument, and.
Okay.
Surveying was done off of that.
Okay, so that's what the new surveyor will use, okay.
But that, that would end up just having to survey, um, Austin's properties, what it amounts to.
Okay, well, I'm not a surveyor, so I don't know how it's done, but I'm sure they know how to do it.
All right, Mr. Granger, my apologies, uh, uh, for being abrupt, but I have a little medical issue with my father tonight, and I really need to get out of here. So I'm trying to just wrap this up as quick as possible, I sincerely apologize.
Um, so.
Will you get to ask me to get back?
Do we need to do that motion, or did we already do it?
No, we didn't do the motion yet.
We didn't do any motion.
The township pay one third the cost of the survey between the Wheeler Aiman and the Steve Austin property.
And that we will handle the logistics of getting the, the surveyor there and the results available to all three parties.
Yes.
And I'll second Bernie's motion.
Okay, any comments? Michelle, are you there?
Sorry, I muted myself, I don't see anything now.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, any other people out there with, uh, public comments?
I don't see any hands up, no chat.
I'll second Bernie.
All those in favor? Hi. Hey, have a Merry Christmas, guys, or.
Merry Christmas, take care.
Joe, take care, see you.
See you, guys.
Bye bye.
Night.
Bye.
Hey, guys, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Well, you sent me that list, Michelle.
Uh, the list of.
The, um, attendees.
Uh.
We'll have to write it down.
Well, whoever you remember.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much, and I'll be over there tomorrow, I'll, I'll sign checks tomorrow.
We could probably, Sarah, make you, uh, can Sarah be a co-host?
Anybody can be.
Well, I'm just. Let's worry about it another time.
Okay.
A co-host can't, a co-host can't be a panelist.
Okay, I'll talk to you about it later, Kathy.
Okay.
Y'all, y'all go just get some sleep to now, take care.
Good night.
In the morning, Kathy, thanks.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Oh, so hard to tap, I'm gonna see John and Maria tomorrow, that I know, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else will be icing on the cake.
Okay, there you go.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Good night, all.
Take care, thank you.
See, how do I get out of here?
Kathy, how do I end this meeting?
Um, hold on, I'm looking here.
I'm trying, I'm looking at all the buttons, trying to.
Yeah.
Do I just close?
Just close out, just close out.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.